All this meeting to order and the first thing we have tonight is a public hearing. The purpose is to, for the proposed 2024 Village of Evendale Budget Ordinance 22-66, ordinance making annual appropriation for current expenses and for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, and declaring it as an emergency. Is there anyone who wishes to testify concerning the public hearing on the budget?
Mayor, I'll move we close the public hearing.
You've been made to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been made. Clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Okay, now we'll begin the, the meeting itself and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes have been previously distributed. I'm sorry, clerk will call them all.
Mr. Sextrow?
Here.
Ms. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Pudoff?
Here.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
All right, we'll go into the ordinance. It's fire department night, folks, in the building. Obviously, you can tell. And we'll go into the ordinance and O S for the, for the new firemen and new fire positions now. So, we have ordinance 23-62. May I have a motion to read it by title only?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the, I'm sorry, ordinance appointing I N K Obershane and Andrew B Robbins as firefighters slash paramedics for the Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 23-62 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 23-63. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
An ordinance appointing Robert J Potter as fire marshal for the Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. I need a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 23-63 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 23-64. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
An ordinance promoting firefighter/paramedic Stephen E. Ruse and, and Andrew C. Wolfong to a lieutenant slash paramedic of the Evendale Fire Department and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion adopting the ordinance as an emergency or as emergent, adopting the emergency clause?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 23-64 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 23-65. I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yep.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Sextrow?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 23-65 adopted as an emergency. Now, let's get to the swearing in part.
Um, let's do the firefighters first.
We got an efficient microphone out there on the podium that's not working tonight. So we're turning this one around and the firefighter Obershane, will you please come forward now?
I, I N K Obershane?
I, E N K Obershane.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
And the state of Ohio?
And the state of Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio?
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio?
And I will faithfully discharge the duty of firefighter/paramedic to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter/paramedic to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Good.
This is my wife Katrina. We have four, four children that are with Mamaw and Papal.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew B. Robin?
I, Andrew B. Robin.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
And the state of Ohio?
And the state of Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio?
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio?
And will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter/paramedic to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter/paramedics to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. That's my wife Carrie, my son Emmett, and Sophia are on the table.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Take that one with you.
I thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Robert J Potter. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Robert J Potter?
I, Robert J Potter.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
And the state of Ohio?
And the state of Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects, observe the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio?
And that I will, in all respects, observe and the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio?
And will faithfully discharge the duties of fire marshal to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of fire marshal to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So that's my wife and then my oldest Charlie and the youngest Riley, the woman.
We've never had a fire marshal, so probably the first fire marshal with the village.
Okay, next, we have Andrew C. Wolfong. Pretty active with this?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew C. Wolfong?
I, Andrew C. Wolfong.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
And the state of Ohio?
And the state of Ohio.
And will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio?
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinance of the Village of, Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant/paramedic of Evendale Fire, of the Evendale Fire Department to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of lieutenant/paramedic of Evendale Fire Department to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. My wife Snow, my two sons, youngest James, oldest Gareth, our friends Nate, Jason, and Bashir are all here to see this.
Thank you. Yes, we can add your Robert.
Andrew Ailer. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew Ailer?
I, Andrew Ailer.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America?
And the state of Ohio?
And the state of Ohio.
I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio?
And I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio?
And will faithfully discharge- And will faithfully discharge the duties of captain of the Evendale, of captain, paramedic, of the Evendale Fire Department, to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of captain, paramedic, of Evendale Fire Department, to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so I have quite a few here tonight. I have my mother and father-in-law, my parents as well, it's my four kids. I have my two oldest boys are Cooper and Hunter, and then my two daughters are Murphy and Finley, and then my wife Kristen, and Finley will be my oldest Cooper.
Okay. Congratulations. Mr. Bruce could not be with us this evening, but he will be sworn in at the later date. These are great evenings for me, though. Sorry this is a joke. Sorry everybody, you're reporting this for a party, so. One more?
Oops.
Save the best for last. Raise your right hand and swear after me. I, Joshua R Asbrock.
I, Joshua R Asbrock.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And that I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the Village of Evendale, Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of captain, paramedic, of the Evendale Fire Department, to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of captain, paramedic, of Evendale Fire Department, to the best of my ability.
Say hello to your friends? I think they all clapped.
I, I, there's a few of them here. My, starting on the side, my, my in-laws, Stephen Gina, my grandmother Shar, my parents, Steve and Mary Beth, siblings, Ben, Helen, Emily, Kevin, nieces and nephews, Logan, Caroline and Patrick, my son Robert, and my wife Jim.
If you have to count, that's three new hires and four promotions.
Joshua, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you.
Chief Hogg's birthday today, if you want to say. Just because I was also.
Definitely.
Chief Hogg's birthday.
That's why they all rose up.
All right. All welcome to stay if you want to. Got a little business to do.
Congratulations all. I think so. I think so. No.
Hey, Mike. Mike. Happy birthday.
Okay, the minutes have previously just been distributed of the prior meeting of council. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes? If not, can I have a motion that we approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes.
Mr. Sextro.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Footoff.
Yes.
Ms. Miley Robertson.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Okay, then we will go to committee reports. The first is finance, Mr. Councilman Burke.
Okay, finance. Ms. Karachi reported November was good, was another good month for the village. November receipts exceeded expenditures in the amount of ninety-five thousand, one hundred ninety, including, not including TIF funds. The year-to-date revenues exceeded expenditures by four million, two hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred twenty-four, also not including TIF funds. Tax revenues in November twenty-twenty-four were twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-one higher than this time last year, which is great, with a total of one million, one hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars in revenue for the month. The year-to-date tax, total tax revenue is sixteen million, four hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred and six dollars, which exceeds tax receipts at this time last year by over one million, four hundred thousand. Actually, a hundred and sixteen dollars, to be exact. Ordinance budget, twenty-four, I, twenty-twenty-four public hearing, council will hold a joint committee meeting on, at five-thirty on January second to discuss twenty-twenty-four capital item budgets. Also, part-time, two ordinance will be, I, with one promotion for Nicole Thompson, to rec specialist two, including, included in the ordinances. Then and now, and then change to earning tax ordinance, the majority of the changes were mandated by the state as part of HB thirty-three, the biannual, biannual budget bill, which was adopted July fourth, twenty-twenty-three. The mandate changes include the ordinance amending chapter eight ninety-one as falls, exempt tax, I, exempt income for under age eighteen, self-explanatory, extension of time for taxpayers, not individuals, non-individuals, filers receive fifteen additional days past the six-month extension due date, and then see correspondence for annual return. The tax administrator may not send correspondence until after day, uh, extended due date, or until tax return is filed, whichever is earlier. Next D, reduction in late filing penalties. Late filing penalties capped at twenty-five dollars, which is currently like fifty dollars. So that will go down. And net profit, uh, profit allocations, expanding definition for allocations of company net profits. And opt-in updates require previous adopt, adopted by the village, no change. And G, in addition to ordinance, was also updated to include language requiring certain employees, including third-party payroll providers, to remit withholding tax via electronic fund transfer, E F T, which then, rather than by manual check, this language was previously adopted in the O R C. Various grammatical corrections were made when discovered during the review of the existing ordinance. Then Gorman Heritage Farm, Nicole Gunnerman reported that there has been some restructuring of the farm positions, and looking forward, I, look, they're currently looking for a new turkey processor in twenty-twenty-four. The current one is closed down, or will not take our turkeys next year, and the closest, current closest one that will is down near the Kentucky-Tennessee border, which is too far, so hopefully they'll find somebody. Education programs going well, hosted two thousand students in the fall for field trips, and the spring is already booked, which is great. Farm-to-classroom program is a new program that includes renting a tower garden and harvesting at school. And never, uh, next recreation, key card system is up and running at the pickleball courts, looking for a new recreation registration software. Many holidays events happening in the center, just check your, the newsletter. Phi Lambda Pi did their annual rake and run on November eleventh. Twenty-six teenagers raked leaves for eight homes and collected over two hundred bags of leaves. Phi Lambda Pi homecoming was November twenty-second. Past Pi, I, Phi members come back to enjoy Cincinnati favorites such as the Roses, Skyline, and Graders. Sixty-five current Phi members and alumnis attended. And then F, Sherwin Anderson donates time to youth program for training of basketball. Next, we have service engineering, Mr. Jeffrey, Jeffries, Jeffers reported. Traffic Island Landscape and Rumpke contracts have been issued throughout, or land, Traffic Island Landscape and Rumpke contracts have been issued throughout twenty-twenty-eight calendar, working through fa, three, phase three improvements at the rec center, that's the lower part of the rec center. And flock cameras added, five additional, uh, five more cameras added, and ongoing repairs. And then the new backhoe was delivered and has been put in use, and last resolution for Specialist twenty-twenty-four. And then other business, commission appointments, tax review, recreation commission, C I C, planning, C A C, B Z A, and revitalization area home, housing. And then B, ordinance for the mayor to negotiate V O E electronics aggregate for the village properties. Energy Alliance is shop, shopping in all or below Duke rates currently. Recap on household aggregation, electrical savings were over a hundred and thirty-five for the last three, I, for, were over a hundred and thirty-five dollars, so there's a savings of a hundred and thirty-five dollars over the last three months. However, gas was twenty-four dollars more than the previous three-month timeframe, so, but net, still in our favor. Potential ordinance issue two, currently ban medical marijuana, and looking to put a memorandum on retail dispensaries, also looking for V O E personal policy. And then D, Evendale Chamber Awards, December thirteenth, and then close, close a flyover property on, so we finally closed that. It's been a six, eight month, or eight-year process, this roundabout that was south of Glendale-Milford off of seventy-five on the west side. And then March committee meetings are March eleventh and March twelfth.
Okay. Any additions?
I'm out of breath.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
You're done.
I hope you're spot ordered.
Any additions? Corrections or changes?
Is Steve done already?
He's done.
Okay, our first order of business was to welcome Chris Patterson to the committee. So under fire, the chief distributed a list of capital items to us for capital that was available for the remainder of the year, and a couple of examples of what would be purchased with that is a new radio for fire marshal, thermal imaging cameras, and some LED, tripod L E D scene lighting, and things like that, were what was on the list. We received forty thousand B W C grant, or Bureau for Workman Compensation Grant, for purchase of new motorized stair chairs, which will enable the department to assist people moving them up and downstairs without injuring our, our department members' backs, and things like that. So the village portion of that match was eight thousand that we had to contribute, and the rest was about ordinances, which we all saw here a few minutes ago, for promotions and hiring. Moving on to police, we have an ordinance on the agenda to change the comp time maximum in a year to eighty hours, and the chief reported on some more success stories with the use of the flock cameras. One was a trailer stolen from Med Mart, and they were able to track it through the use, you know, of the camera, so that continues to be a great investigative tool for the police department. Going to cultural arts, the photo exhibit stayed up through November thirtieth. Bourbon tasting in November was sold out, there was more than fifty people. Sparkling wine tasting sold out all three sessions. And Art Venture to the Maverick Chocolate Factory in the Ford's Garage also sold out in November. December Art Venture occurs this Friday with Miracle on Thirty-Fourth Street at Lock Media, and I forgot to ask, are there spaces? Just few spaces are still available, how about that? And then also, Evendale was accepted as a venue for the two thousand twenty-four Photo Focus Exhibits, and we received two grants, which totaled twenty-five hundred dollars. And we received two grants, which totaled $2,500. For building, planning, and zoning, Planning Commission reviewed some of the zoning changes for rental properties. And I think we're going to have a public hearing scheduled in January for council to, to hear or take feedback on the changes. Also, there was further discussion on, on the food trucks. And just as a note, the taco truck is no longer in Evendale, it's moved to another community. And then.
Close by, or?
Close by, close by. Also, in terms of the reporting for building department, for November, 24 applications were received and plan reviews were made of all the applications. Six permits were issued with construction value of a little over 211,000, resulting in revenue just shy of $1,500. And GE is going to be, is rebranding and will be putting up a new sign in the near future.
Multiple signs.
Multiple signs, multiple signs as part of their efforts. Good news on Spartan Drive. The owner's planning to paint the buildings, cleanup efforts continue, and problem tenants have been evicted. And Dave Elmer's been meeting with the property manager on a regular basis, so things are moving along on Spartan Drive. And that's our report.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, I have a couple of things. First of all, we finally closed on the property off of I-75, the enter, enter and exit ramp with the state of Ohio. And that deed has now been filed and belongs to the village of Evendale. I just remind you that the Capitol bill hearing on June, or on January 2nd is an open meeting, and the public is invited to that. So if anybody is out there and hearing us on the TV, you want to know about the Capitol bill, come on down. Tomorrow night is the awards dinner for the village of Evendale, in which we honor Fire, Police, and our different people who have served us during the course of the year. It's $45 a person, but the public is welcome to come. This is a side note, I noted that the state of Ohio has achieved a AAA rating for the first time in the history of the state of Ohio. And it takes a lot to get those, those ratings. It takes an awful lot. And the state has been, been progressing very well, and they've got a lot of money in the bank right now.
Is that a financial rating, or is that, is that a financial rating?
Yeah, it's all three financial institutions. What is it, Moody's? I can't remember the other two. But they're all three, and they, all three were the top rating that you can get in, in the business. And that's the first time the state of Ohio has ever achieved that. Even I couldn't get that when I was in Columbus.
Did Intel have a large part of that?
No, the fact that the budget has a lot of money in it, it got, it got the designation, and they were able to recover. I remember when they had 97 cents in the rainy day fund. That was a bad time. And I hate to report, the Service Department building has, the bids, bids came in and they were too high. And so therefore, we're going to have to go back and take a look at them, try to do some value engineering, and we'll report back to you next month as to what's going on. Former councilman Phil Schneider, as many of you know, passed away a week before last. And quite a few of us attended the funeral. It was a sad occasion, but he had been ill for some time, and he's in a better place. He's in a better place now. So that's my report. Any questions?
No, Mayor, I just, there was a couple of things on code enforcement that I forgot to mention that I wanted to do. The, and I said Dave Elmer, and I meant Mark Elmer, I've been meeting with Spartan Drive's property manager. But there's some businesses along Reading Road that are storing their vehicles in front of the buildings, and we're making a concerted effort to try to get them to comply with our zoning, which says that you're supposed to store that in the back of the building. And also that there are three vacant and deteriorating parking lots along Reading Road and Glendale-Milford, and that's been turned over to our law director for further action.
Good. Anything else? All right, let's go back to the ordinances then. Ordinance 23-66, I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ordinance making annual appropriations for the current expenses and for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024, and declaring it as an emergency. That was what we had our public hearing for at the beginning of the, of the meeting tonight. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
We have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now declare ordinance 23-66 adopted as an emergency.
Next is ordinance 23-67, I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to set 2024 part-time employee pay rate and promotions, and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't get who said that.
I was.
Chris?
Chris Tom.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 23-67 adopted as an emergency. Next is ordinance 23-68, I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. Now a motion, may I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the payment of amounts due upon certain contracts requiring certification of availability of funds, and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 23-69 adopted as an emergency. Next, we have ordinance 23-70, I'd like permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
And ordinance making appointments to the various boards and commissions in the village of Evendale, and declaring it as an emergency. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
And ordinance amending Chapter 891, the municipal earnings, earned income tax regarding municipal income tax for the, for the years starting on or after January 1st, 2024, and declaring it as an emergency. This is putting into effect all the things that Mr. Burke talked about in his report. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And ordinance amending Section 258.060, regulating the maximum accumulation of compensatory time for sworn police officer, sworn police department personnel, and declaring it as an emergency. This is the recommendation of the chief, and after they've looked it over quite a bit. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 23-71 adopted as an emergency. Ordinance 23-72, I need permission to read it by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
And ordinance amending Section 258.060, regulating the maximum accumulation of compensatory time for sworn police officer, sworn police department personnel, and declaring it as an emergency. This is the recommendation of the chief, and after they've looked it over quite a bit. May I have a motion to suspend the second and third reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now may I have a motion to put the ordinance clause into the ordinance?
Emergency clause.
Emergency clause.
Put the, adopt the emergency clause into the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Myla Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Pudoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
And now declare ordinance 23-71 adopted as an emergency. Ordinance 23-73, I'd like permission to read it by title only.
Last one was 72, though. 23-72, you said 71 again, but.
We just did 72.
We just did 72.
Yeah, he said 71.
But you said 71 was adopted.
73.
So moved. So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Sextro?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Putoff?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley Robertson?
Yes.
Imposing a moratorium for a period of three hundred and sixty days on the granting of any permit allowing adult-use cannabis operations within the Village of Evendale and declaring it as an emergency. We might want a little bit of explanation on this.
That'd be great. Thank you, Mayor.
Please?
That'd be great. Thank you, Mayor.
David, you want to start and we'll have our law director chime in as we go along? You got to speak up, you got to speak up because there's no...
I would go over to a microphone.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may recall here this November, Ohio passed issue two, legalizing recreational marijuana. That, passage of that issue came with a whole host of new regulations, certifications, licenses, licenses, and definitions around recreational use, cultivation, processing, and retail dispensary thereof. I handed out earlier today sort of a quick little cheat sheet, if you will, on what the moratorium that's in front of you today would do as compared to the ban that you all placed on medical marijuana back in January of two thousand seventeen, when Ohio passed approval of medical marijuana back in November of sixteen. So essentially, what you're doing tonight is you are, you would be considering the prohibition of recreational marijuana cultivation, processing, and retail dispensaries for a period of three hundred and sixty days. The purpose of doing so would allow the village to further study and understand the implications of the new certifications, licenses, and definitions associated with adult-use cannabis. And I'll just give you one quick example. Adult-use cannabis operators have been defined in five different ways. And so some require a license, some require a certification, some require both. I'm not sure that I'm able to understand what the criteria are associated with obtaining those certifications and licenses. So just that alone, I think, is justification for the board to consider, for council to consider a moratorium on the issue until law director staff have a chance to further understand implications.
Want to chime in on the reason for the ordinance then?
Sure. A number of communities right now, rather than outright prohibiting marijuana, are enacting the moratorium. This has been kind of pretty widely adopted by many communities in the last month or so following Election Day. And kind of part of the reason is, as Dave said, there are a number of things, the complexities